All right, well, we're 3:02. As others keep coming and joining, we'll just add them to the conversation. We do have some special folks that we want to introduce. And again, welcome, everybody, and thank you for taking the time for the annual general meeting. Again, my name is Tom Love, and I'm honored to serve as Utah Symphony Utah Opera Board Chair, starting year number two, feels like year number 10, but a lot in the last 12 months guaranteed. I do want to introduce a few folks to you on this call that are special folks. First off, we've got Ken Verdoya. And Julie, just may I want to say, if you don't mind, but Ken Verdoya is Utah Symphony Utah Opera's ZAP reviewer and a good friend, a longtime friend of ours, of mine personally, and of Utah Symphony Utah Opera. We're fortunate to have Ken as the reviewer for Utah Symphony Utah Opera from ZAP. Ken, I'd invite you to say a few words.
Well, just briefly, since I see so many friendly faces that I've known for many years, already assembled as the board, certainly this board doesn't need an explanation of the Salt Lake County Zoo Arts and Parks Program because the Utah Symphony and Utah Opera were pivotal in the establishment of that public trust of investing in our arts and cultural organizations. So I'm going to be just sitting in for the general meeting and the board meeting afterwards. This is a difficult time. My old buddy Tom knows this better than anyone when it comes to arts organization. Zap this year is streamlining its process, and our message is very, very simple. We're going to do everything we can as quick as we can, as simply as we can, to sustain our major cultural institutions in Utah. I'll be here if you have any questions, but other than that, I'm going to be a fly on the wall.
Fabulous. Welcome. Great to have you, Ken. It's good to see you again. We've also got Nancy Pinto-Orton from On Stage Ogden. She's the On Stage Ogden Board President, and will be taking Mark Stratford's place as the ex officio representative from On Stage Ogden. Nancy, would you like to say hello?
Yes. Hello, everyone. And we've lived in Ogden for about five years. We came from the East Coast, Washington DC, Maryland area. My family had lived out here. So we were quite familiar with Ogden Symphony and Ballet and got involved with supporting children's programming. And we just, we just love it. The cooperation that Utah Symphony and Utah Opera provide to Ogden, the schools and the extra programming that comes in. And of course, the concerts are miraculous. Everyone in the concert hall just remarks how lucky we are that Utah Symphony comes up so often to help us out. So we look forward to the continued relationship, and I'm here to learn.
Thank you. Welcome, Nancy. Carolyn Abravanel, is Carolyn on with us? I didn't see her name.
I haven't, I haven't seen her yet, Tom.
Okay, well, maybe hopefully she'll be able to join. It's always a pleasure when Carolyn is able to be with us. And then we have two potential board members that we'll be voting on later. I don't know if they're on. We have Dr. Shane Stoll and Dr. Stuart Barlow that Thomas Wright will be reviewing when we get to nominating committee report. I just wanted to introduce them if they're on.
They've been able to join.
Okay, they haven't joined yet. Okay, well, that should cover sort of the brief intros that we've got of some special guests. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to a really special guest, someone that Pat Richards is thrilled to have on this call, and that is our brand new president and CEO, Mr. Steve Brosbeck. May I give you a huge, warm Utah welcome for your first annual Utah Annual General Meeting, Utah Symphony Utah Opera Annual General Meeting. Ladies and gentlemen, Steve Brosbeck.
Thank you, Tom. It's great to see everybody again. I'm starting to get to know several of you through meetings and phone calls over time here, and that's just going to keep, keep growing as we finally get up there. Because either the girls and I, or two of our girls, were able to get up there a couple of weeks ago and spend a few days looking for a house. And I think we figured it out. I think we may have cleared the last hurdle today. We'll see when I get home and have a couple of conversations with our Realtor. But also spending the last few days ramping down here at the Nashville Symphony and starting to have more meetings with everyone up there. So we're looking forward to it. And in this week of transition, which is next week between the organizations, if there's anything that I can be doing to be helpful, anything that I can do to be in touch with everybody and continue to ramp up and hit the ground running when I get there on the 17th, please don't hesitate to be in touch and let me know.
Fabulous. Welcome and good luck with the house and the relocation. That can be always be an interesting time and even made more interesting by current situations. So welcome. That's fabulous. Okay, just a reminder, if everybody, my fault too, if everybody could mute when other folks are talking, that will be very, very helpful. Pat, is there anything you would like to add in welcoming Steve?
No, I'm, I'm going to save my remarks for, for my CEO report. Thank you so much.
Okay, you've got it. Now with that, we will follow the agenda. We'll go to item number three, which is the Utah Symphony Utah Opera Artistic Reports, which are always rewarding. We're going to start with the Symphony, and I, I see that Terry Fisher is on with us. Terry, welcome. Welcome from Geneva, and it will be great to hear from you.
Hi, everybody. Do you hear me? I don't really know how it works. Now I wasn't muted. It was all good. Okay, great. Well, great to see everybody. Brief, it's of course a very special meeting of the same, the past year. Only at this time of the year, we are reflecting back on, on the last season and all the highlights. And we were just in the middle of this very, a companion to the part project which we could have, we talked about at the end of May and early June. It is only, I reckon, hard to do this in one or two years, but we'll do it. Before talking about programs, of course, I can, I could tell you everything we missed from March to the summer and all the challenges, artistic challenges, we always like to, to put in evidence for our continuing growth. However, in the middle of this summer, the first thing which comes to my mind is, of course, the thousand of lives which have been transformed in the last months in America and in, in, in the whole world, basically, all the organizations which have been affected and transformed by the pandemic or in different fields, in economy, in education, in science, in healthcare, and entertainment, and in the arts, of course. And here we are struggling to do what we all took for granted, which is work with passion to animate, elevate, and inspire and motivate our communities. I know that in USUO, everybody is involved in thinking and acting in the same direction, going back to restart in a very different way, of course, to live music within health and safety regulations. This does mean, as I like to said and said already in the past week, that we simply do the best we can. To me, it means that we are doing what we have to as an art organization. We have to take the responsibilities to give to our community through sound and space for reflection, for self-confidence, for the collective, to our community, and of course, for, on, on top of everything, what technology has brought within the last months. And thanks, this was possible to keep in touch. I'm the first example, not being in the same continent, and I still felt very close to the organization before last month. Our responsibility is ultimately to do what we call live music in, of course, a different format in our wonderful Avrivan Hall. For next fall, our audience already, of course, bought many tickets for the concert for the entire season, but especially for the fall. And John Miles and the marketing department did a great job for promoting what would have been the second part of the 250th Beethoven anniversary. So knowing very much that people bought tickets for some specific projects and programs, and knowing that people would, of course, understand changes, we thought it would be absolutely crucial and respectful to keep the concept and the spirit of the first part of our season. So Toby and I, Toby Tolokan, I'm sure you all know him, have, concerning only the masterworks, other people will talk about the other departments of live music in our organization. We have decided to recreate the fall in the symbol of surprises. Inevitably, we have no choice, but on top of that, it's a very nice one. So every concert will keep at least one planned composer. The spirit and the, the ID we had for every concert. Beethoven will be very, very much present for this unique anniversary. We have decided, in collaboration with the management, not to have any soloist in the fall, which is, of course, something very, very new, has simply never, ever happened. But with, with this radical choice, we want, as programmers for the Symphony, to show our solidarity, our financial solidarity to the collective effort the organization is making. So every concert will have a few surprises with, we like to say, an appetizer, which could be the surprise, an entree, which will be something substantial and very expected, knowing that the musicians will like to play this music and the audience will love listening to it, and a dessert, which could be another surprise. So this format will help us to keep being flexible because we will have to, you know, we're making plans, and the situation is changing every day, every week, every hour sometimes. So I am very sorry, I'm not able to give you more details as per today, as many parts of the organizations are still waiting for different negotiations and health studies about engineering, you know, what the sounds could be affected in our hall, the musician projecting sound, et cetera. So this should come soon, and we'll be able to share what we have planned very soon. However, what I can tell you is that everything for the fall has been planned on what the state and the county guidelines are. Of course, no way to take any inappropriate risk, either for the musician or for their audience will, will like, and I'm sure we, we will have a lot of audience, because the need of live music is more crucial than ever. Following those very serious guidelines makes me and us feeling very positive and confident that the notion of like music will really definitely help us to refine through arts and sounds in general what it actually brings to our lives. And when I started, I said, we always took that for granted, and now we cannot perform, you cannot listen live sounds, and the world is transformed. So of course, it will be different. Concerts will be shorter, there will be smaller orchestras, but this is not so important. It will be very difficult for the musicians to perform because they'll be spaced out on stage, very much so. So we'll have extra difficulties, but that's not important. What matters is the message we'll be able to give to our audiences and to our community, showing a very positive and confident organization performing live music. Thank you very much.
Terry, thank you very much for that inspirational message and love the optimism. Before we go to Christopher, I just opened it up. Does anyone have a question for Terry about what's upcoming?
Tom, Tom, quickly, it's Joanne. I love the metaphor using the appetizer, the entree, and the dessert. I thought it was very clever and very appropriate.
Thank you, Joanne.
You're welcome.
Tom, I'm just curious from Terry, what's the general situation with orchestras in Europe going into the fall season? Similar, better, worse to that we're talking about?
It's very, very different than America, I can say. And also, every country is very different. And the, the health situation is, is not the same in every country. Some countries like Germany and Scandinavia and even Austria are reopening concert halls. You probably have seen that the Salzburg Festival has opened with an opera. Amazing. I know that many orchestras are reopening, reopening also in September, but the situation is different for one main reason is that they can test every single musician before the first rehearsal every week. And I know this is not, as per today, really possible in America for different reasons. Of course, we're not going to start talking now, but this makes a huge difference. Musicians tested gives confidence, and they are together, and the audience can, can come. Also, in a very limited, you know, probably 15%, 20% maximum of the normal size of an audience. I can tell you very briefly, will take me 30 seconds, an anecdote. I went to a concert in June, the first concert of an orchestra here in Switzerland. And I, I was blown away by the effect it had on me because I was listening, actually, live sounds. I was not listening from my computer with headphones or even a hi-fi stereo in my house. And even if the concert was not fantastic because of the difficulties I described before, I, I had a new way of being emotional about the music because it hit me just the hearing live, beautiful, normal sounds without any transformation. And this, this took me really by surprise. I did not expect to have this, this reaction during this first concert. And with this experience as a listener in mind, I can only imagine what it will bring to our wonderful community in Salt Lake for those of you who will come to the concert. And, you know, this will, you know, our orchestra, you know, our extraordinary musicians, and they will, you know, go through these difficulties and these challenges and give you the most beautiful lifestyles you can only dream about.
Fabulous. Thank you for that update, Terry. All right, we are going to move on to our artistic director, Christopher Macbeth, with the opera for your report, sir. And you're on mute, I think.
Am I? No.
No, you're not. My mistake.
Yeah. Thank you, Tom. Thanks, everybody. Thanks, Tiffy, for those inspiring words. Much appreciated at this time, for sure. And great to work with you. You know, where, as an opera producer, 75% of my time is spent looking forward, but circumstances have given me the opportunity to have a little bit of extra time for reflection. So I have been spending some time and thinking on the 1920s season just passed, and obviously, no one could have predicted it coming all to a complete stop on March 12th, the way it did. But also, we couldn't have predicted that the concept of art imitating life would be so truthful. When we planned Verdi's most favorite opera, or the audience's most favorite Verdi opera, La Traviata, we planned it not only because people would love it, but it would showcase two young, rising career singers alongside a veteran Met regular, and the opportunity to reimagine the piece with the collaboration of Ryody Woodbury Dance Company. It was deemed a huge success by our audience, but who would have known an opera whose story revolves around a soprano who dies, because of course, they all die, but in this case of consumption, would have, would have been preceding a pandemic. And in January, Utah Opera's commitment to showcasing the best of American works gave us the Pulitzer Prize-winning Silent Night by Kevin Putz and Mark Campbell. It was enthusiastically received in Salt Lake City, as it has been elsewhere. But how might we have predicted that an opera which takes place in the first year of World War I, one of the most vitriolic events in Western civilization, would have coincided with a point in our country's history where issues political and social would so often be in the headlines and causing debate on such a major proportion. Even in the season's shortened state, opera showed its power and resonance, and we're awfully proud to have represented that power. But how do we move forward? Well, we had planned this coming October, Richard Wagner's The Flying Dutchman. However, we pretty quickly came to grips with the fact that an opera that requires a very large orchestra, a very large chorus, several singers, and asking audiences to sit in it in their presence for two and three quarter hours was probably not the best way to go. And so that has been delayed for a year. But we wanted to look at what opportunities were before us. And there, it, there are a number of operas that call for a smaller orchestra, that call for a smaller group of performers, that we haven't been able to find time and space in the calendar to make happen, but are real treasures that we've always wanted to share with our audience. And so you'll hear more about David working wonderfully and closely with our orchestra colleagues, and staff has been working with the county in terms of the mitigation and safety protocols that Thierry mentioned for our audience. And, and again, there are pieces that we can do that are friendly to both of those situations. So we're looking forward to something that I'm actually quite excited about in October, should we be able to make it happen with a pair of one-act operas with some very special performers in the Utah Symphony. So more on that later. We've been told not to scoop our marketing department with these things. So you'll just have to wait in anticipation with everybody else. You know, the art form of opera began in the late 1500s when a group of humanists, poets, musicians, and intellectuals gathered in Florence to discuss the trends and power of the arts, and particularly of music and drum. In those 400 years since that gathering, there have been more than 100 recording, recorded epidemics, and many of the most important works of art were created during such challenging times. So those thoughts and that information leaves me with two unequivocal thoughts. In spite of the challenges that have previously befallen society and the arts, we're still here, and we're as important as we've ever been, and we will continue to be. And to quote one of our community's most generous and visionary leaders, the best is still yet to come. So thank you for your support, your leadership, as we move forward to the best yet to come. Thank you all.
Christopher, fabulous report. Thank you again. Great sense of optimism, and we are all curious about what you've got cooking up for October, because that, that will be a fabulous experience. And we are all curious, but don't say anything, because this is streaming out live to the world. So well done. All right, we have some more good news from John Miles to talk about the Deer Valley Music Festival. I know Toby Tolokan has been working feverishly the last 60 days or so, and there's some really good news to talk about next summer. So with that, John Miles.
Thank you, Tom. So, and thanks, Christopher and Terry, both for your inspirational words. I just want to add that the arts are such an important part of the economic recovery of our state, but also the emotional healing that we all need to go through together. And so I'm really looking forward to the day that we can enjoy performances together as a community again, and hear from the great artists that we, that we all support. So, looking ahead, so we had originally announced and started sales for the 2020 Deer Valley Music Festival at the end of February at a time where I don't think any of us could have predicted the impact that this pandemic would have had on us. And by May, it became very clear that the events that we had planned would not be able to go forward as we had expected this summer. And so as we discussed the options, we agreed that the best of the options would be to move as many of the confirmed artists as we could from 2020 into the 2021 Summer Festival. And, and thanks to, as Tom mentioned, the hard work of Toby and hours of phone calls and negotiations with managers, we were able to make that happen. And so what you see right in front of you is what we've currently announced for 2021. There were two changes with the schedule, and we added in The Temptations and Kristin Chenoweth, which I think our audiences will be very excited to hear. And both of these concerts were originally planned for Bravinal Hall during 2020, but we didn't, we felt like it would be more appropriate due to the restrictions with attendance to have those up at Deer Valley. And so you can see, we'll be having, you know, Kristin Chenoweth, Cool and the Gang, Super Diamond, which is a Neil Diamond tribute band that has been at the festival before, The Temptations, Magical Music of Harry Potter, the music of John Denver, The Beach Boys are confirmed to come back, Little River Band, and then we will be doing the 1812 Overture with Rockman and Ossia Piano Concerto Number Two with the Gina Bachauer, gold medalist from 2018. And so you see, there are, there is one confirmed artist who hasn't been announced yet, and we're working through the details of that announcement with the artist's management. There's just a couple things to confirm before we can go on sale with that. But hopefully, we'll be able to do that soon. And then our chamber concerts and gallery concerts will be announced at a later date, probably sometime in 2021. And so it's a really strong lineup of concerts. It's going to be very popular with our audiences anticipate, assuming that we're at a place by next summer where we can safely sell at full capacity while also keeping our artists safe and our staff safe, that we'll see record-breaking attendance and ticket sales for the festival. We've got a good head start. So prior to canceling this summer, we had sold a good number of tickets, and so all those ticket buyers had their tickets moved into these rescheduled dates, and our box office has been working one-on-one with anyone who is unable to attend on their new date. And then, so once that, now that that's all finished, we've been able to go on sale with all of our concerts, since all these concerts are on sale now, with the exception of the VIP program tickets and development is still working on fundraising for the current season. And so those VIP packages will go on sale in September, and we'll be holding the seats for VIPs until then. So hopefully, everything goes well, and we are able to get this pandemic under control by next summer so that we can enjoy these amazing concerts with Utah Symphony up at Deer Valley.
Fabulous. You pulled, you, you have pulled off a fabulous schedule. It looks, it looks exciting. I can't believe it's already booked, and the tickets are already on sale. I got an email this morning, Kristin Chenoweth and The Temptations. So that's, that's going to be great. Fabulous. Any questions for John or Deer Valley Music Festival? All right, that sounds great. Good job, John. Thank you very much. Now, we love, one of our favorite parts, to hear from the musicians directly. I'm going to turn it over to Andrew and Julie, and tell us what's going on with all of your colleagues.
Thank you so much, Tom. Greetings to all the board and distinguished guests. Sorry, am I still on?
You're.
Greetings, greetings again to the board and distinguished guests. The musicians' perspective looking at the 2019-2020 season can be viewed within the context of building and growth. We begin with evaluating our momentum. In the months leading up to March 12, 2020, the musicians of the Utah Symphony were experiencing a steady stream of artistic growth. Each week this past fall presented bold challenges for our musicians led by Terry Fisher and our lineup of guest conductors. The forward momentum we all generated was reflected in such performances as Prokofiev's Symphony Number Five, the Messian Canyon of the Stars Project, Dvorak Symphony Number Eight, with our subsequent tour to Palm Desert, California, as well as our highly successful opera, opera production of The Little Prince. These examples can be viewed as a rising benchmark of excellence that our orchestra is embracing and relishing. We value artistic challenges, traditional and progressive. Since the COVID-19 shutdown, our momentum is being reconfigured as is fitting to this time of uncertainty. To continue building while uncertainty looms large is without a doubt daunting. Being placed on furlough has been both unpleasant and maddening, but Julie and I assure the board that being laid off has not weakened a musician's resolve to adapt and grow. We are resolved to come back to work safely with as much confidence and aplomb as before. As you may know, the musicians of the Utah Symphony have organized, produced, and distributed musical content of our own accord while on furlough. Participation in these projects has been widespread, involving every group of the orchestra to varying degrees. As a result, the DNA of our musicians' abilities is becoming better known to the orchestra at large and the organization and community as a whole. And this is very important. The possibilities that come from our organization's self-understanding must not go overlooked. Through the people that make our orchestra alive, we must strive to better know what we are and what we are capable of. By understanding our capabilities, we'll be able to better serve our community. This all leads to building a new perspective. The musicians want to acknowledge the calm and collective leadership demonstrated by Pat Richards and Tom Love during this crisis. The work they've done to best protect the USUO is a testament to their commitment to us. Their willingness to continue a CEO search during a pandemic is both commendable and bold. As for the search itself, As for the search itself, we want to again congratulate Brian Graff and his team for such a smooth process beginning to end. The musicians look forward to working with Steve Brosbeck as it's clear that his acumen will mesh well with our organization and community. We hope this perspective will bear, we hope his perspective will bear fruit in regards to bolstering our need for a more multi-dimensional company culture and image. We're intrigued to see how Mr. Brosbeck can aid the USUO towards better self-understanding as a community asset. As the board continues to look forward through the COVID nineteen era, the challenges are undoubtedly petrifying. But they are manageable. For the sake of longevity and safety, this time is about pushing the boundaries of what's possible in our industry and sharing our musicians' capabilities with the broader community. The USUO must continue to know itself. We are in control of how Utah sees us. We are in control of the excellence that connects us to our audience. The coming year will not look like a regular season, and that's not a bad thing. The twenty twenty one season will provide us an opportunity to shine a light for our community and the people we serve. Which means that now is the time for growth. The stress of redesigning this coming season is real. Like any pursuit that ends in success, it walks the the gauntlet of pain and turmoil. Growing a stronger identity as well as our rapport with the audience is what the musicians uh feel will carry us through this crisis towards a vibrant future. Despite the uncertainty we face, the resilience of our institution will and must prevail. Thank you for your time.
Andrew, that was fabulous. Very well written, very well thought out. Um, and I I I the connection that we have and the relationship that I think the management, the board have with the musicians and all of the artists is probably unique in America. And we are so grateful to you and your colleagues. Um, and thank you for your perseverance and dedication and continuing to move forward. It's very, it really is incredibly moving and inspiring. And now Julie, you get to follow that act.
Um, yes, I'm not going to do much other than to thank Andrew for that fantastic statement on behalf of all of us. Um, couldn't have said it better myself. Honestly, that was just a wonderful sentiment. Um, I also do want to myself thank um Pat and Tom for um leading so beautifully during this um unimaginable um time, time period. And just to say that while the path that we find ourselves on right now is not the one we expected to be on. Eventually, the road will open up and we will have a different viewpoint and we will come out better on the other side than we could have imagined when we started this. So thanks to everybody um for being involved and for taking care and for looking out for the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. We will be back to offer solace to our community, to you and to one another as well. Thank you.
Julie, thank you. We will be back. It's now, we've turned a corner and you can feel it and tell it and from all of the difficult decisions of financially in April and May and June and all of the unknown to where we are now in the the board meeting in August where we can see coming back and playing music for our community is just such a relief and so so much hope. And it really feels like we've turned a major, major corner. And with that, I'm going to call on the one and only Pat Richards for what will probably be her final interim CEO report. And boy, no one is happier than.
Well, indeed, I think this probably is my last report to the board as CEO. And so I want to take a a few liberties to share some thoughts with all of you. Um, as you can imagine, this year has been like no other. I think we started last fall with a little bit of disruption, but could not have imagined all that has followed and even all that is yet to come. But throughout this year, you, all of you, have been the glue that has held us together. The staff have stepped up to their roles and beyond. In a climate of uncertainty, each of you gave direction and strength to your employees and colleagues and faced the hard decisions that had to be made. The musicians use their creative energies to help us keep connected with patrons and with even a wider audience through virtual performances. You've acted with integrity and come together with management and the board to try to plot a sustainable path through this pandemic and into the future. And the board has never wavered in believing in the value of this organization, in the importance of the music that we offer to the community and in the need to make every effort to move forward, to reopen safely and to reinforce our value in bringing solace, healing and inspiration through our work. I have been immensely blessed with support from staff, musicians and board throughout this time. And I am deeply grateful to each one of you. Looking ahead, I think there's still much uncertainty. We can't forecast the course of this pandemic or even what direction the economy will take and how long that will take. Or what the impact on the arts in general and Utah Symphony, Utah Opera in particular will be. But we have the advantage of optimism from our leadership of a can-do and problem-solving attitude that guides our efforts and from the fresh thinking that our new CEO, Steve Brosbeck, brings to our organization. Here is what I hope for Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. That all of you here today, because of what we have gone through these last months, recognize the fragility of the arts in our society and recognize even more profoundly the value they bring by the very fact that the absence of live performances caused us all to miss that experience so deeply. I hope you all will redouble your efforts to support and to advocate for Utah Symphony, Utah Opera and for all the arts to ensure that we survive and thrive, no matter how long it takes to get back to some sense of normalcy. I also hope that we as an organization will use this crisis as an opportunity for reflection and for reinvention. That we recognize the realities that have been stripped bare by this pandemic and the inequities and the needs of our community that have been revealed in recent months. There is a new imperative that organizations that receive the support of the community must more clearly reflect the composition of that community and more directly address the needs of the entire community. This is a time to deeply examine our assumptions, to reach more broadly for new ideas, for new relationships, for new audiences. A time to experiment and to deepen and broaden the ways in which we connect with our community through education, through performance, through service, through inclusion. I believe that our future depends on how we respond in this moment of time. I was so happy this week, and indeed, my husband was so happy, to see the return of basketball. And I was proud that the Utah Jazz was the opening act. I was particularly struck by the messaging of that first NBA game by two rival teams in solidarity. By the words on the jerseys of the players, each one carefully chosen. And I particularly noticed Joe Engel's journey jersey, which read ally. It could have read something different that that maybe seemed more arrogant by saying I am one of you or I understand perfectly. Um, but it didn't do that. His choice of words seemed to say, I will listen and I will learn and I will try. My hope for us is that our jerseys will read healer. Our jerseys will read empowerer. Our jerseys will read leader. That we will reach out and make ourselves more relevant, more accessible, more essential as in new ways we help guide the community through this difficult passage. I want to thank you for this opportunity to serve. It has been an honor. And I turn it back over to Tom.
Wow. Um, uh, this is going to be a first. I'm going to invite everyone to unmute and give Pat Richards a Zoom standing ovation. Absolutely breathtaking, Pat, and inspirational. I think every one of us are right there with you every step of the way. We can help heal this community and play a role. And boy, do we play a vital role. And it's become very, very apparent. Uh, I am so proud to work with everybody on this board, all of the musicians, everyone in this organization, all staff members. It's just um, I have learned a lot and I am I am deeply grateful. And Pat, this organization couldn't have survived without your willingness to step forward almost a year ago in this very difficult position, which we thought at the time would be part-time and has been more than a job and a half, especially since really the first of March. So this organization will be forever in your debt and never know the enormous sacrifice that you and Bill went through. Uh, but we're deeply grateful and we're here today because of it. So again, our heartfelt and deepest thanks. With that, um, I will um open it up for Q and A from anybody out there that has a question or a comment or a thought or anyone here. It's an open forum. Okay, all right. Well, seeing none, I'm gonna turn to, what is there one? So we have their hand up? Julie, you'll help me if you see it, right? Okay, with that, uh, I do know that Steve would like to say a a few final words as now the baton has been passed. And we will close this meeting with words and thoughts from our new president and CEO, Steve Brosbeck.
Thank you, Tom. Um, it's listening to all of these reports and hearing everybody talk about the music, the mission, the work of Utah Symphony, Utah Opera and the community. Um, I I'm still watching this a bit from afar, even though as I mentioned earlier, I've already started to meet and start to ramp up uh in my knowledge of the organization and my experience with the people in the organization. But at every element along the way as part of the search, um, you're seeing in this meeting what I have been seeing from afar. And that is the great intention, the great focus on the music, the mission of this organization and the desire and the urge to get our musicians back on stage and serving our community. And those are the things that were utterly most compelling to me and my wife Cassandra as we were thinking about this move. And I hope that you're hearing all of this, taking it in and understanding the work that we have to do ahead of us. The work that has been being done in this year and the years prior. And the incredible commitment of the organization to move forward, get the musicians back on stage, get Terry back in town and to really continue the service and the work that we have to do. There is going to be a lot of work to do in the future and we're going to do it together. And I'm really looking forward to getting on the ground and really getting to know all of you on an individual basis and really finding out how we can move forward together and make the organization even better than it already is today. So I look forward to seeing you very, very soon.
Thank you, Tom. Fabulous. Thank you, Steve. Uh, excellent. And we look forward to having you here on the ground in the great city of Salt very, very soon. And with that, uh, that will conclude right on time. As a matter of fact, um, the uh twenty nineteen twenty twenty annual general meeting. We will now adjourn this meeting and begin the actual full board meeting. And all on this call are welcome to attend the board meeting. With that, we will go to the new agenda. An item number one on the agenda is the consent agenda to approve the special board meeting minutes for May nineteen and June twenty third and to approve the twenty 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 one meeting schedule. They were sent out in stamps. I hope everyone got it. Uh, to pull them up. Julie, you may just want to share the meeting schedule page. And then I will ask for a motion from someone on the board to approve.
I'll approve the minutes.
Great. Thank you, Kim. Kim has moved approval of the consent agenda. Is there a second?
Second, Gary Porter.
Thank you, Gary. I will call for an audible approval. All those in favor, say aye or wave your hand in favor to approve.
Aye.
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 Are there, are there any opposed? Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. And there is the schedule for the meetings next year. We do reserve the right to to hopefully have a an event uh in in on Wednesday, July or the August summer. Uh, and have it, we've talked about this for a few years, but to have a board meeting in conjunction uh with the Deer Valley Music Chamber Concert or an event in Park City, we're really going to do everything to pull that off next year. So. All right, those those schedules are all in uh your attachment that you can look at later and put in your calendars if you would. And with that, we go on to item number two. We get to hear from one of my favorite people, Thomas Wright.
Oh, yes, it's on. This is the most exciting part of the meeting. I want to thank the nominating committee. Uh, it's great to be a part of that committee. Uh, they do good work. They're efficient. And so I will try to be efficient in going over uh the business that we need to do. Uh, so I will start off uh with the first slide. And I appreciate the help of Julie and Pat and everybody keeping me on top of it. Um, we need uh to consider a motion, uh, Mr. Chairman, to elect or reelect the following individuals to the positions specified beginning September first of twenty twenty. And that's in keeping with our bylaws and making sure that uh we have officers in place. And so um in our meeting, uh, it was proposed that we put forward and was unanimously voted on uh that Tom Love would serve as chair, Doyle Arnold vice chair, Brian Grief vice chair, Joanne Shebler vice chair, Annette Jarvis as secretary and John Darcy as treasurer. So I put those names forward and Mr. Chairman, if yeah, if you will entertain a motion from somebody to uh for approval of those.
Thomas, I think it would be most appropriate if you made the motion.
I I make the motion uh uh that we elect the board chair and officers for beginning September first, twenty twenty for the next fiscal year.
And then call for seconds.
Second.
Uh, it has been moved and seconded uh to approve the board chairs and officers for the next uh fiscal year. As you saw, all those in favor, say aye or.
Aye.
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 Are there any opposed? Darn it. Okay.
Hey, before we move on, I just have to say thank um and the team, all those people there. I won't read the names again for giving their time, doing such a great job for Utah Symphony, Utah Opera. They're dedicated. They know their stuff. Uh, they make it happen and we're all lucky to have you leading us. So on behalf of everyone, including the nominating committee, thank you for being willing to serve again.
Thank you very, very much.
All right. We didn't let anyone off the hook. That's good. You're back on. Good. And just um just by way of reminder, um, our elected board current status. The board of trustee members with voting privileges for the current year include thirty five elected trustees. And just so everybody knows, the bylaws permit up to forty. We have thirty five this fiscal year. Uh, fifteen lifetime trustees, two musician representatives uh that are are a huge part of this uh this this group. Two ex officio trustees, which are the Utah Symphony Guild and the On Stage Ogden, and then obviously the president and CEO. So that's just kind of the makeup of the board of trustees. And I just wanted to make sure everybody knew about that. Now, uh, we the elected board rotation and retirement segment here, Jessalyn Anderson, who we're all crazy about, an amazing person, uh, an effective board member. I've served on a couple of boards with her and I I admire her. I look up to her. I've learned a lot from her. Is resigning after seven years of service on the board, including three years as chair of the Government Relations Committee, which is really important. And she's done a great job there, I know. And one year as vice chair. So um, I just want to uh, I think this is an appropriate time to maybe uh read the uh resolution thanking her. Is that all right, Mr. Chairman, if I do that at this time? I'm going to go a little out of order. There's a resolution of appreciation. Uh, and I, if it's okay, uh, I won't make the motion because I know there's a lot of people on this board that are very close to Jessly. So I will read it. And then if somebody wants to make a motion to uh to adopt this resolution. And then with a second, Mr. Chairman, if you'd entertain that, that would be great. Uh, the nominating committee did adopt this in our meeting. Whereas Jessly Anderson has been a longtime supporter of Utah's great civic institutions and faithfully faithfully served on the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera Board of Trustees since September two thousand and thirteen. And whereas she provided exemplary. And whereas she provided exemplary leadership as vice chair of the Board of Trustees, chair of the Government Relations Committee, and co-chair of the Campaign for Perpetual Motion. And whereas she provided guidance and keen community insight as a member of the executive nominating government relations and 2015 CEO search committees, and whereas she has agreed to continue serving as an honorary board member and through advocacy as a civic influencer and believer in the power of great live music to connect our community. I love that part. Therefore, be it resolved that Utah Symphony, Utah Opera extend its most sincerest gratitude to Jessely B. Anderson for her faithful service to our organization and impact on the cultural opportunities available to the citizens of Utah.
Fabulous. You would move adoption of that resolution, wouldn't you, Thomas?
I would, if nobody else wants to, but I gotta say, I will wholeheartedly move. Again, I've served with Jessely, honored to know her and to be a part of it. And I know everyone on this Zoom, and a lot of people that aren't here could thank Jessely for all she has done, not only for Utah Symphony, Utah Opera, but the community at large. And I think it's fantastic. She's agreed to be an honorary board member. Jessely, thank you for all you've done. And Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we adopt this resolution.
And we all make a joint motion. Can't, yes, the entire board make a joint motion. Yes, second it. I think Thomas makes the motion, and we all jointly second it. All those in favor of approving the resolution, say aye. And upon fear of death, anyone opposed? No. Congratulations, Jessely. Thank you very much for all of your work. And notice in there also, and this takes another motion, but Jessely, we did vote in nominating committee to appoint Jessely to the honorary board. So she's not going away. She'll still be involved with us. We'll need her counsel and guidance going forward. Back to you, Thomas, for more.
Very good. We'll resume where we were. Thanks, Julie, for making all this happen. I don't know how Julie puts up with me, y'all. I'm just saying. Okay, we have Mitra Kishanti, who is not renewing after serving a three-year term of service on the board. So we want to extend our appreciation of service and recognition of her effective service, and just say thank you so much for being on the board. Three-year terms are plenty of time to get something done, and we appreciate everybody who's willing to step up and serve. And so I just wanted to, on behalf of the nominating committee, say thank you. And Julie, will you read this resolution of appreciation since I read the last one? Then people won't get too sick of me.
Certainly. Sorry. Whereas Mitra Kishanti has been an advocate for arts education and a believer in the power of great live music to connect our community. And whereas she successfully garnered support for arts education to help communities develop creative thinking and determination, as well as openness to new ideas and diverse points of view. And whereas she provided guidance and insight as a member of the USUO Board of Trustees since September 2017. And whereas she has agreed to continue serving the organization through advocacy and as a civic influencer, therefore, be it resolved that Utah Symphony, Utah Opera extends its most sincere gratitude to Mitra Kishanti for her faithful service to our organization and impact on the cultural opportunities available to the citizens of Utah.
Thanks, Julie. Very well read, and another fantastic member of the board. And so I would make the resolution on behalf of the nominating committee and everybody on this call who I know echoes my sentiments that we adopt this resolution without your objection, Mr. Chairman.
Is there, is there a second?
Second, done.
Thank you very much. All in favor of approving this resolution for Mitra, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Fabulous. Thank you.
For your great service. We appreciate that. Okay, moving right along. These are members of the board that are eligible for reelection. The following have completed their three-year term, but they come up again in September. And I don't think I need to read the names. They're all there. They're, you know, fantastic board members. And, you know, we would love to, they're eligible for reelection. I think we've reached out to them. They want to continue to serve. And so I think without exception there, they've all agreed to that. So, Mr. Chairman, it would be great if somebody on the board would be willing to make a motion to reelect these 12 members to our Board of Trustees beginning on September 1st, 2020.
Thank you. Thank you. Is there a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Great, thank you, and I need a second.
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 All in favor to approve these 12 members to another three-year term on the board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you all. Motion carries.
That's great. And I just have to point out, they're all amazing members, even you, Tom. But Dinesh Patel has been a member since July 1st of 1996. And I just think that's incredible service. Many of them have given many years, but I just wanted to highlight that. I thought that was an incredible statistic. So if you're looking for Utah Symphony, Utah Opera Board of Trustees trivia, there you go. July 1st, 1996. We'll put that in the questions. All right, that takes us to elected board new candidates for election. We have two great new candidates to serve three-year terms on the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera Board of Trustees. Stuart Barlow, who is an incredible guy. I've known Stuart. He's a physician and surgeon with a professional practice in Ogden. He's been a member of the Utah House of Representatives since 2011. I think he represents District 17. He earned his Bachelor of Science in Psychology from the University of Utah, and his M.D. from Georgetown University School of Medicine. His professional community affiliations include National Advisory Council, Weber State University, McCady Hospital Foundation, Utah Medical Association Foundation. He's a board member and past president of that, and Davis County Volunteer Free Clinic Board. He was a trustee. He lives in Fruit Heights, and his wife Marie lived with him there with their six children. He's a great guy. We're lucky to have him. He has agreed to serve on the board, and the nominating committee wholeheartedly recommends him. So maybe we'll just do these one at a time, Mr. Chairman, but I, representing the nominating committee, you know, I encourage the adoption, or the election, rather, of Stuart, Dr. Stuart Barlow to our Board of Trustees, and hope that you will entertain a motion.
Tom, I think we can do them all in one motion, so let's.
So then Dr. Shane Stoll, he's a consultant headquartered in Spencer Stewart's Dallas office. He's a clinical psychologist who advises leading companies on how to optimize individual team and organizational effectiveness in order to achieve their business objectives. Shane has extensive experience coaching senior management on strategy and leadership, as well as recruiting, talent development, compensation and benefits, succession planning. And in addition to all that, Shane regularly advises companies on culture and executive assessment and development. Before joining Spencer Stewart, Shane was the chief people officer at SWCA Environmental Consultants. In that role, Shane led the firm's human resources function. Prior to that, Shane spent nearly 10 years as a partner as a management consultancy focused on senior leadership development. Shane earned a doctorate in clinical psychology from Loma Linda University and Medical Center, and a bachelor's degree in psychology from Utah State University. He's a licensed clinical psychologist in Utah. Two amazing people that, you know, that have been vetted and looked at by the nominating committee. Pat, without objection, Mr. Chair, Pat, do you have anything you would like to add? Because I know Pat may have some comments here before we entertain a motion to elect them.
I would just like to add, first of all, both of these are great selections. They love the organization. They love what we do, and they bring a lot of talent and skills to us. I might mention specifically that Shane Stoll has offered to be an executive coach and a transition help to us working with our new CEO and the staff. Shane has consulted with us in the past, knows us very well, and will be really helpful to the transition and our future.
Thanks, Pat, for that, and thanks for all you've done. So, Mr. Chair, those are two names that we put forward to be elected to our Board of Trustees beginning September 1st, 2020.
Great. Thomas is nominating chair. Would you make the motion?
I make the motion that we elect these two members, Stuart Barlow and Dr. Shane Stoll, to be members of the Board of Trustees beginning September 1st, excuse me, 2020, for a three-term.
Then I need a second.
Second, John Darcy.
Great. Okay, thank you, John. Fabulous. All those in favor of appointing Stuart and Shane to the board effective September for a three-year commitment, say aye. Any opposed? Fabulous. And with that, Julie, we will now meet Shane Stoll, as he will be added to the call. Let me know when he's in, will you?
Yes, Shane is back on the call now. I believe he's just joined by phone as opposed to video.
Okay, Shane Stoll, are you on the call, sir?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yep, fabulous.
I am here.
Welcome, welcome to the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera Board of Directors. You have just been voted and approved. It was a very close vote, but if it did carry, just want you to know.
Hey, thank you. I appreciate it. I like close wins.
Awesome. No, welcome. It's great to have you. Thank you for your willingness.
My pleasure.
2020 are really hard to win, so be glad, man.
Yeah, that's right. And I think we have one more thing, Tom, that involves Jessely.
Yeah, so we need a motion to elect Jessely to the honorary board in recognition of her service on the elected board and her anticipated continued engagement within the organization. So without, I will make the motion to elect Jessely B. Anderson to the honorary board effective immediately to engage her and to have her continuing support with the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera.
And it has been moved by Thomas Wright, and I'm hoping seconded by Ken Gardner.
Yes, I second.
Yes, such a close friend of Scott and Jessely. He's been moved and seconded. All those in favor of appointing Jessely to the honorary board, say aye. Any opposed? Good. Jessely was on mute. Perfect. Thank you. Congratulations, Jessely. Thank you. Thomas, does that wrap up the nominating committee report?
That's my report to the nominating committee. Thank you.
Thank you. It's really important. We've got a lot, we've got a boatload of really great people, and we have done a very good job really growing the board, and I'm very excited with the quality of folks, the kind of intelligence and thinking that are, that are going to continue to keep this organization not only surviving but thriving for our community. So, Thomas, great work. Thank you for all of that, why you're staying on the board, of course. Okay, with that, we're going to go to item number three, the finance committee report. I'm going to turn it over to John Darcy and Steve Hogan for their reports. Thank you.
Good afternoon. I'll make a few brief comments on our current fiscal year, and then most of my comments will be about what we are looking at for next year. Julie, if you'd put up the first of the financial sheets. Thank you. This, we think we will end this year with a small surplus, which is very good news. I'm really talking about column B on this page with lots of numbers. But if you go down to the very bottom number in column B, we think we'll have roughly $160,000 surplus. Unfortunately, we've gotten there by having the musicians on furlough for the last three months of the fiscal year. And because we were able to get approximately $2,500,000 in forgiven payroll protection loans from the federal government. I mean, without those two big items, we would have had a very, very difficult year and definitely lost a considerable amount of money. So we're fortunate where we are. The real challenge now is to go forward. And most of my comments will center on column D and primarily on column E, which are the projections that we had as of a couple of weeks ago. I will point out, you know, before we go through these numbers, that they are not anywhere near final, and I'll explain why as we go through. But it is very, it's been very difficult for the staff to put together meaningful projections when we really don't know what we can do or what we can't do in the way of programming and whether we'll be able to, you know, have performances or not. But column D, it makes the assumption that we do not open the season until January. I mean, it's somewhat arbitrary. We just said we would be closed for the first four months of the fiscal year. We would be, again, looking at the bottom line, it would be forecast to be $1,000,900,000 in the hole. And you know, going back up to line 16, you see there's some COVID relief funding. We've gotten approximately $2.5 million of potential COVID relief funding. But we're concerned that $1 million of it may not be available to us if we don't start the sea, excuse me, the season until January. If we were to get that money, that would make our deficit $900,000 rather than $1,009,000. But, you know, rather than focusing on this column, all the effort recently has been on figuring out how we can make the coming fiscal year work and starting in September sometime. And that really represents what you see in column E. Now, I'll point out that at the bottom line, that shows a $3.5 million loss. And I'll tell you how we're going to be addressing that here in a minute or two. In the fall, we've made the assumption, and Terry and Christopher have taken up the challenge that they will put together performances at which, you know, we will earn enough revenue to cover the out-of-pocket expenses associated with those performances. It will exclude the cost of the orchestra, which is a big cost, but in terms of, you know, in any associated costs other than the orchestra, you know, the, for the fall through December, we are expecting net performance revenue, which shows up as the subtotal underlying six, to be zero. Then the second half of the year, where we haven't amended the schedule as of yet, we're showing a loss of $755,000. And that is obviously driven by the fact that we can't sell very many tickets in either a Bravenell Hall or the Capitol Theater. That number probably is, well, definitely is subject to further change and hopefully in a more positive direction. If you look at lines 7, 8, 10, those are the behind-the-scenes staff and support operations. And there have been considerable cuts in all, on all three of those lines, 7, 8, and 10. We did not make any cuts to the line 11 for fundraising. I think the reasons are probably obvious that we've got to make a special effort to maintain funding and seek support for this coming year. Line 9 is salary and benefits for the orchestra, and this is a line that hasn't been adjusted yet. We are in significant negotiations with the musicians about amending their contract for this coming season. But because that hasn't concluded yet, we haven't moved this number, the 10. But because that hasn't concluded yet, we haven't, haven't moved this number, the $10,445,000. I mean, I, I think it would be fair to say that we are hopeful that we can save some money here, and, and the musicians are being very cooperative. But until that's been further announced, we're not going to change that number. If you go down in the fun, funding area, you can see on the subtotal underlying 16 that we expect to raise $14,343,000. You know, a million 599 on, on line 12, 13, that's our annual draw from the endowment. That's, that's a pretty firm number. The $10,244,000 from government and contributions. We think that's a fairly good number. It is a fairly significant curtailment of government revenues because of the ZAP tax being lower, the, the funds that the county receives. We're expecting that to be about 20% lower, or the county is expecting it to be about 20% lower, and that's going to impact us $600,000 or $700,000. You know, general contributions, we have lowered our expectations by, you know, a million and a quarter or thereabouts from what we had earlier in the year before the pandemic struck. And, and we're very hopeful that we can achieve that result. And then the $2,500,000 is the COVID relief funding that we're getting. And Julie, if you turn to the next page, I'll outline what that entails. If you look down in the lower left-hand corner of the page, you can see that we've gotten some super generous gifts from Deloitte Hanson, Kim Gardner, the Alternative Vision Fund, which is a Chicago-based organization that has granted us a $1.5 million challenge grant. And then the bottom $1 million is a state program. I believe the total that the legislature set aside is $9 million to support the arts organizations here in, in the state. And we're very hopeful of getting approximately $1 million of that. So those four items total $2.5 million. And, you know, get us, going back to the first page, Julie, get us to that $14,300,000 number you see just below line 16 in the far right-hand column. Now, because we haven't been able to include in this the adjustment that will be made to the musicians' salary and benefits, you know, we've, we're showing a $3,489,000 deficit. Certainly, the musicians cannot be expected to make up all of that difference. But, you know, our expectation is, is a good chunk of it will come from the sacrifices being made by the musicians. I believe that there's, you know, several hundred thousand dollars if, if we really work hard back in all the, the staffing areas and in the other, the net performance revenue, that 755,000 subtotal underlying six. But, you know, as you can probably understand, this is a very fluid situation. While the programming for the fall is falling in place, the programming for the season, starting in January through the rest of the, well, up to the Deer Valley Music Festival, still is in flux. And hopefully, we will be able to get this deficit down to something that we can reasonably be expected to live with. I don't think I can say anything more with any real assurance, but the finance committee, the executive committee, the orchestra committee, and, and many people are, are working to, to solve the mystery of how, how we get that deficit down to a much lower number. And with that, I'll open it up to questions if there are any and conclude my report.
Tom, could, could I just make one brief clarification? Since the nature of our business is that we don't produce widgets, but we produce beautiful music through the use of, of personnel, that's our largest expense. I, I want to commend also the staff, our artistic leadership, music director, artistic leadership of the opera, and in our management leadership, that they will also be taking comparable salary cuts in, as, as we go forward in trying to address this potential scenario for this next season.
Are there any other questions or comments, or John, or Steve?
I, I have a quick question, Tom. As we look to, to the future, I'm wondering, you know, behaviors are certainly going to change even when COVID ends. And so I wonder what our thought process is on, you know, what data should be tracked? So at the university, we're tracking enrollment, for example, because it's a clear indicator of behavior and what the market wants. And, and so for the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera, I wonder what, what, what are we going to be looking at? And maybe this is a question for later discussion with Steve Broswick coming on board.
Well, I'll take a stab at it. I mean, the real difficulty is we don't know what our, what we will be permitted to do reseating in both of Bravanel Hall and the Capitol Theater. And, you know, that's probably the biggest unknown. And once we can start moving back to normal in, in selling tickets, you know, that will be a clear indicator. I think one of the other things that we will all want to watch very closely is how we do in contributions. You know, we, we've been in this COVID situation for three or four months now, and, you know, we've seen a, a drop-off in contributions, you know, offset in large part by some very, very generous one-time donations. But we'll have to be watching how our fundraising goes as, as, as this all goes forward here in the next several quarters.
Thank you.
Any other questions for John? As we see it, it is sort of a moving target, but as always, John, very good work. It's complicated, and there are some unknowns, but we do feel positive about where we're going, especially with fundraising and board fundraising and some key donor support and participation. We're, we're, we're feeling very optimistic. Okay, well, that will conclude the, the finance committee report, and I'm going to turn it over to Doyle Arnold. We have a motion on, on an endowment matter that we need to take a vote on. Doyle?
Thank you, Tom. So as, as John has just walked us through, and if I can steal or paraphrase a line from Julie Edwards' musicians' report, the world, or the world we've been living in is not the world we expected to be living in. And according, and furthermore, the, the world ahead of us is still remaining a great deal of uncertainty as to how it's going to unfold, which makes financial planning difficult and places a premium on some financial flexibility. So kind of with all of that in mind, I want to walk you through some actions that we took last year and why we took them, but that we now want to undo. But then an action that we want you to take to position us for the coming year. Last year, or the fiscal year that's about to end, we expected to be a very challenging one, as I laid out in a memo that was in your materials. And we, we took, we took some actions to try to meet that challenge. First of all, in December, you authorized us to take a special additional draw of $248,500 from the endowment, basically from the very recently received price bequest that you all know about. We expected that that would be needed, not sufficient, but would be needed to help balance the budget this year. As the year went on, due to some misses on ticket sales and as particularly in late February and early March, as what we now know as COVID-19 pandemic was beginning to unfold, it looked like we were going to be in a severe cash crunch other than our usual seasonal one. And the board authorized us to borrow $1 million in addition from the endowment to help meet that, what was expected to be an immediate cash crunch with no certainty at all, that we would be able to repay it. You approve both of those things, but then, as it turns out, as John also articulated, the financial results of the season have turned out very differently, in part due to the receipt of the PPP loan of $2.8 million, which covered a lot of the staff costs for a couple of months. Furloughing the musicians and other actions that we have taken indicated, one, we didn't, we didn't have that cash crunch because a month or so after we took that loan, we got the PPP loan from the government instead. And secondly, we don't need the $249,000 to balance the budget this year, so it was removed from the kind of where are we going to end up projections that John went through in column B. So first thing, I'll, I'll just kind of draw conclusions as we go along. We have repaid or never, never fully really spent the million-dollar loan, and we've returned them to the endowment, to the, to the portion that, that is technically unrestricted. So therefore, the board can, the, the board has locked it away, but the board can tap it again. And so we, we are undoing that loan. We also did not use the draw this year, and so that's been repaid to the endowment as well. And so we, we want you to, and I'll move that we rescind the million-dollar loan and the $248,500 draw for this fiscal year. But before I ask for a second, I want to finish off the, the rest of it. As John also articulated, we do think that we will have, have a difficult time balancing the budget in the, the upcoming fiscal year. So we'd like to renew that special draw of $248,000 and do it in fiscal 2021 instead as a, as a part of, in addition to alterations to the musician contracts, other staff reductions, pay reductions, the other things we're doing to help balance the budget, which, as John articulated, is going to be somewhere between two and three and a half million dollars potentially. So those are the three things we want you to approve today. But I want to, I want to also, just putting all the cards on the table, tell you about one other thing that we believe we will do. In that same December meeting, you approved changes to the investment policy statement, which gave, gave us the flexibility to tap for short-term liquidity needs, that board restricted endowment, and sort of set up an internal line of credit of up to $1 million. Upon certain findings by the finance committee, that the need was expected, that there was a need, but that it was expected to be temporary. And then reporting that to the executive committee, then the executive committee could authorize that. And then upon those thing, those actions, the investment committee would allow management to move $1 million, basically into a checking account and tap that in lieu of, or before tapping our line of credit with the bank. That way, we don't have to pay interest to the bank on at least the first $1 million. And we don't know when and how much and over what pattern we might use that $1 million. But with as much uncertainty as there is in the upcoming fiscal year, we expect to need that. And we expect that the finance committee next week at its meeting will make those findings, and, and the executive committee and the investment committee will make those authorizations. So that's kind of what's before us. This will give us a lot of flex, you know, a lot of flexibility for the upcoming year. And put back into the endowment some funds that we didn't need in the current fiscal year. So with that, I, I will make the motion that Julie has scrolled to, that we acknowledge the repayment of the million-dollar loan previously made and rescind the special draw authorization for the current fiscal year, but approve a draw, a special draw on that same amount for the upcoming year. This would be in addition to the draw that John showed you in the normal draw from the endowment that he showed you in the column, the right-hand columns in, in his previous report. So with that, that's the motion. I'll take questions, open it up for discussion.
Doyle, thank you for that. If we've got questions and stuff, that would be, that would be great. Go ahead.
This is John Darcy. I'd just make a clarifying point that with that $1 million that is available to the organization to borrow on a short-term basis, our intention to hold available an equal amount of money to what is borrowed under our line of credit, so that we always have a source of repayment for that borrowing. And, and we do that because borrowing it from the endowment that, where it's invested in, in short-term securities, paying, you know, less than 1%, we save a little bit of money because our borrowing from Wells Fargo under the line of credit, you know, they charge us between 4% and 5%. So we're, we're arbitraging the difference there to, to try and save a little bit of money.
Fabulous and fabulous, both Doyle and John, for your leadership, your financial acumen on this. It's really important. Are there questions, thoughts, or comments? This can be a bit of a sticky issue. Before we go back, I want Doyle to succinctly make the, the motion again, but do we have comments or questions from the gallery? Okay, I see none. Doyle, just, just restate the motion succinctly again for everybody, if you would.
Julie, do you, do you want to put up that last page again? That's got it written out there very clearly, I believe. Ah, there it is. So I move that the board acknowledge repayment of the million-dollar loan that was previously made from the board restricted endowment, and that it rescind the prior, actually, it wasn't a motion, it was a, it was a authorization for a special draw from the price request and the amount of 248,500 for the fiscal year that we're in now, 2019 and 20. But you also, you approve a special draw of 248,500 to be made in, after September 1, to support operations. to support operations and get us closer to a balanced budget in fiscal 2021.
Thank you. That has been moved by Doyle. I am looking for a second. Thomas Wright, I saw your hand first. Thank you very much, Thomas Wright. That would be great. And complicated stuff. Great work, gentlemen. Thank you very much. Really do appreciate it. Can we call for a vote? All those in favor of the motion, as Doyle just read, say aye or raise your hand. Anyone opposed? All right, motion carries unanimously. That takes care of the matters. Which is to extend the Executive Committee authorization, which we did through the end of August, probably through the end of the year, just because things are working so seamlessly and we have to, you know, react. This is an Annette Jarvis item, but I don't believe Julie Annette is on the call. Is that true?
That's correct. Joanne Shebler has agreed to substitute.
Joanne, vice chair is pinch hitting. We turn it over to you, Joanne. Thank you.
Thank you, Tom, and thanks to, to Julie for supplying me with the background information. I didn't have all of my previous notes with me today. I move that the board extend its authorization of the Executive Committee through December 31, 2020, to take necessary actions to preserve and sustain the Utah Symphony, Utah Opera Organization. And this is a repeat motion. The board approved this authorization in March, and then it was also reapproved at our last board meeting.
Correct. And just a little clarity on this, this was just because the Executive Committee now meets weekly instead of monthly. It was, we did this initial motion from March through the end of May, and then we extended it from the end of May to the end of August. And now we're asking to extend it again from the end of August to the end of December, just because the ground beneath shifts so often and so quickly that we need to be able to act on behalf of the board. So that is the motion by Joanne Shebler. Is there a second?
I'd be happy to do so.
John, I saw your hand first. Seconded to extend it through the end of the year. All those in favor, say aye or wave your hand. Aye. Any opposed? Awesome. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you all for your support. With that, let me ask the full board if there is any other business that anyone out there would like to surface before us now. Okay. Is there any other business, any questions, any comments from everyone out there before we adjourn into executive session? Where I will ask that everyone on the board will remain on the call. We have a couple of important executive session matters to discuss. So I ask you to stay before that. Anything else before the board, anyone would like to raise? Yes, Doyle, I see your hand.
Thank you, Tom. Could I, could I just ask for Pat or someone to give us an update on how we plan to? Or if we plan to roll out more to the broader community, the challenge grant fundraising from the, the, the foundation in Chicago? I, I know we've talked to the board about it, but I'm not sure we, have we gone out formally to the broader donor community yet? And what are the plans?
We, first of all, Tom and I are making individual calls, following up on a letter that we sent to all of our, our current board members, lifetime honorary and emeritus board members. And in the process of doing that, making very good contacts with many of those people who, who are stepping up and helping us with this challenge grant. I would have to ask Leslie, because we have sent so many letters out that I cannot remember which is which, and I am not sure to what, to what audience she may have sent notice of, of this particular challenge grant. If, there you are.
Yeah. Hi. Thanks for asking the question, Doyle. We're in the process of preparing letters as we speak to go to all of our lapsed donors between the 2018, 19 season and today, notifying them of this challenge and asking for them to step up and help us to match that. We've also sent individual proposals and have talked to a number of some of our major donors, some of whom have already stepped up and made a, a special gift toward this challenge. We'll be following up with emails as, as well, as well as many personal calls. So we do our plan on, planning on rolling out the announcement of the challenge grant in the next week or so. And we're very grateful to all of the board members who are participating in that challenge. And I think it sends a very strong message to the community.
And as we see our friends and challenge them, is, I, I haven't looked recently. Is there a specific place on our website that you can see this thing if I send them there?
Absolutely. In fact, it's the first thing you see when you go to the website. It says, will you rise to the challenge? And there is additional information on all of our support pages as well.
Thank you.
No, that's a good question, Doyle. And so I'm very intrigued on the public response of that campaign. But privately, I've made 10 or 15 board calls and I have been overwhelmed by the additional support and enthusiasm from the board to step forward and make additional contributions. So if you haven't been contacted by me yet, well, you will be. Anyway, it's, it's been very encouraging, but great question. Before we adjourn into executive session, I understand that Ken Verdoya would like to make a comment. Ken, is that true? And please step up. I'd love to hear from you.
Tom, I was just saying, as you go into executive session, that's an opportunity for me to step away and say, thank you very much for letting me spend the time in today. I, I just want to commend this board. I'm spending a lot of time with different arts organizations. It takes a deep level of commitment to negotiate a nonprofit arts organization in any good year. When the going gets tough, when a recession hits, when a pandemic raises its unwanted, unplanned forehead, it calls on the better angels of our natures. And I've seen those in play today in your meeting. Thank you for letting me bear witness. Thank you for letting me represent the Utah Symphony and Utah Opera in the ZAP process this year, and thank you for your cooperation. I wish you all the very, very best, and I will take my leave.
Ken, thank you for your support. Be safe and be well. And with that, ladies and gentlemen, we will adjourn into executive session. I would ask that all members of the